Were you expecting Jazz Aspin today?
Yeah.
By chance? I was volunteering today.
Oh, really?
And I saw a couple of firefighters walking around. I thought it was so funny that they put up signs that say this is not a safe shelter, something like that. Okay.
Yeah.
Just the goal is to get people out.
Excellent.
Yeah. Okay.
Ever?
So everyone. Yeah, yeah. I was hoping, I was hoping, you know, building, you know, building apartment. I was hoping, I didn't know building apartments.
It was a term.
Guy has been doing July.
Yeah.
He's planning its preservation.
I thought those.
We can look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, like have life.
What? What? Go mountain bike?
But I really miss the old days when we were there.
And that was COVID. Well. Solid crew, you know.
That's what we're calling out.
Indiana. Good hands. We might need to the town.
Oh, yeah, come this way.
Talking about.
I like there's all sorts of rules. There's all sorts of rules. Yeah, but what you do.
Yeah.
Oh, you can use this stuff.
So honey, Brian.
And each other.
There's no, I mean, it's just hanging on. Which way? Three hundred dollars. Three dollars a piece. A year.
All right, everybody, welcome. It is the Thursday, August twenty eighth, meeting of the Carbonell Planning and Zoning Commission. Buckle up, here we go. Okay, could you please take role?
Nicholas DeFrank.
Here.
Jeff Davlin is absent. Nick Monsieur.
Here.
Kim McGee.
Here.
Jared Mork.
Here.
Online. Cindy Suplegio.
Here.
Jesse Garcia. Anne Crimmer.
Here.
Franco Palumbo.
Thank you, Kay. All right, Jared, can you remind me how we dive into the voting privileges and conflicts of interest portion? Is that a, is it a, every meeting, do you want to kind of lead that or?
Sure. So we have eight members tonight, one absent regular member, so Anne will be a voting member. And Franco will serve as the alternate.
Great. Disclosures, as you all know, the owner of the one thirty three restaurant five twenty two is a client of mine, so I will be abstaining from any conversation on five point one of this evening. And I don't think there's anything else disclosures unless.
Jared, do we, do we need to excuse Nick from the room or just the conversation? Because I feel like we're at the tail end of this where.
Yeah, I, I think normally I would say from the room, but I think based on, on what happened at the onsite meeting, I think Nick can just abstain from the discussion. I, I don't think anything's controversial with this.
I can close my eyes if you want, Jared, and cover my ears.
Thank you, thank you, I would appreciate that.
Okay, noted. Uh, consent agenda, approval of the immediate minutes from the July tenth meeting, any comments for that? Other than gratitude to Kay as always for putting that together for us?
Yep, thank you, Kay, thanks for making me sound smart.
Jared, you are coming through very quiet FYI.
Sorry. Hmm, sorry. No, thank you, Kay, for making me sound so smart as always. Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion, Jared, second, Kim, thank you both. All right, public comment for peoples, for items that aren't on the agenda, is anyone here today for public comment? Yep, please come to the mic, name, address.
Good evening, I know I'm on the agenda, but this is separate, so pretend this is unrelated to what we're going to vote on later. My name is Chester White, I live here in Carbondale. Thank you for your time for being here, I am here today to talk about the tone that I think this commission can set with the town to help businesses prosper. I have an example of mine unrelated to the five two two highway one thirty three project where it has become incredibly challenging to move through certain processes. And I am a big believer that those processes are what make Carbondale pretty and functional. And we have staff that are totally overburdened, overworked, and drowning in work. And the degree to which this commission, and I'm going to make the same appeal to the town trustees, can set the tone that there can be a common sense approach. I, I think we can relieve the burden on them and help businesses open, create a vibrant town, and allow people to find decent work. Thank you.
Is anybody else here for comment, comment on non-agenda items for this evening? All right. With that, we will move into actually item number one, five point one, the five point two highway one thirty three restaurant material mockup approval. Jared, I'll pass it to you.
Yeah, real, real briefly, you guys met onsite, looked at the material mockup. The general sentiment from the planning zoning commission was that the material board was acceptable. And I directed the P and Z to have a formal acceptance of those materials at tonight's meeting, so we include some photos if you weren't able to make it. But we are recommending that the P and Z makes a motion to accept the onsite material mockup for the five twenty two highway one thirty three project. With that, I can answer any questions, Chester, the owner is here, if there's any questions. Otherwise, if you guys have no questions, you can enter dialogue or we could accept a motion.
I think, I think before we get into, sorry, I didn't virtually raise my hand, but I think before we get into this, I just want to give a lot of props to the contractors, that was a very successful mockup, and I think that was one of the nicer ones that I've seen personally in my experience out here, so Chester, you guys got a good team with you guys on that one.
Uh, I'm just noticing that we're missing a mic at the front table.
I'll pass that along, thank you, Jared.
Thank you, I, I stayed after and told them myself too, but I'm just letting you know, you got a good team. But I have no comments on the, the material mockups and approvals. I'm curious if any other commissioners do, if so, raise your hand, but I think we can just start putting this to a motion. So, motion to approve the concrete sample and mockup as seen onsite. Can't remember the date, last Tuesday.
We have a motion, does anybody want to second that motion?
Second.
We have Anne with the second, all in favor? All opposed?
Abstain.
And one abstention, motion carries, thanks so much.
Thank you, and I wanted to close with a big thank you, two thank yous, first to town staff, they've been very helpful and generous with their time on this, so hats off to Jared and Ellie, they take more meetings with me than I deserve. So thank you all, and then thank you to you all for being so invested in this and for coming out and for giving us positive feedback, really appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chester.
Thanks.
Thank you all, thanks for standing on that, Jared. All right, five point two, ADU regulations, text amendment. Jared, back to you.
Alrighty, so, um, let's see, some of this information you guys have seen before at previous conversations. So, you know, apologize for repetitiveness, but also since this is the first public hearing, there's a certain level of get the information out there for any member who's wanting to follow along now. So they can kind of get up to speed with the information, so kind of briefly, you know, how you'll see the memo organized is some background information where, you know, the town is currently at with regulations, and then some kind of high level questions that we have of the public and the planning zoning commission to help guide recommended code changes, I didn't want to just go out on a whim and assume what I think I might hear, I wanted to kind of hear it from the planning zoning commission, hear it from the public, and then we can draft regulations, and so, you know, I really think the purpose of tonight is to hear from you all, hear from the members of the public, have some dialogue, give some direction, and then continue the public hearing until the second meeting in September, so that staff has time to draft up some code language, and then we can start talking a little more of the nuances of some of the code language. But as you'll see in the memo, I think there are some, some still larger kind of, you know, more policy or, or larger guidance direction that, that we staff would like to hear from this body, so diving in accessory dwelling units. We've had them in the code for quite some time, we've had them in the code prior to the unified development code. It's been a discussion point of numerous comprehensive plans and kind of a, a hot topic in Carbondale, so in twenty twenty three, we held a series of work sessions with the trustees, the planning commission, and the historic preservation commission. Trying to get some kind of high level feedback. Unfortunately, we didn't have staff capacity to move forward with anything at that time, and so, you know, part of this is kind of a recheck in on some of what we heard in those twenty twenty three meetings to make sure that, that, that direction still carries weight. And so on page two of the staff memo, two and three, we kind of summarized those conversations, I won't really go through all of it, but you know, some of the overarching themes were really expand opportunities for ADUs, maybe reduce some of the administrative processes that are involved with ADU reviews. Look at the appropriateness of attached and detached ADUs. Look at the current regulations related to size and type of an ADU, and then discuss parking requirements for ADUs. So, this is a notice public hearing, so thank you all at your, your July tenth meeting of initiating this code text amendment, but I'm kind of getting into the nuts and bolts in ADU. How our code currently defines ADU is it's a subordinate dwelling unit created within or detached from a single family residence, and that's kind of important, so really when we're talking about ADUs, we're talking about them in relation to a single family residence, not in relation to multifamily residences, attached townhomes, multifamily structures, your apartment complexes, things like that. As, uh, you know, so, so we, we have a lot of other definitions for dwelling units, and it, it's really, really making sure that we're clear on that. If that is something that the, the town wants to look at, I think that's maybe a little bit of a larger conversation than how ADUs fit within the single family residence ADU conversation. Kind of jumping into zoning, really, the town has, has two types of zoning, we have straight zone districts and we have PUDs. Our straight zone districts, we allow ADUs in some form or fashion in all of our residential zone districts. We don't allow them in our commercial and industrial zone districts. With regards to PUDs, our PUDs have ADU regulations that kind of span the spectrum from allow to not permit. And, and how they're discussed in, in each PUD differs, sometimes it's where they're discussed within the list of permitted uses within that zone district. Sometimes it's within how the PU defines what a dwelling unit is, sometimes it's within private covenants and how they address it. And, and so it's really kind of this smorgasbord approach of, of how our PUDs address ADUs, and so, one thing that we worked on, which is attachment B to the staff memo is trying to overly summarize each one of our PUDs and try to make a definitive statement to help you and the public determine whether ADUs are permitted or not permitted. So as you can kind of see in attachment B, the majority of our PUDs don't currently allow ADUs, some do under certain circumstances, some like River Valley Ranch, you know, allow ADUs and caretaker units but have certain caps to it, so, so when kind of looking at this ADU kind of fabric, we tried to categorize these into difficulty levels. And so, you know, this is something Ellie kind of led the charge on with the creation of the map, and so I'm hoping she can maybe talk you through kind of how we tried to demonstrate green, mint, pink, red. So, if, if you don't mind.
So, green is like definitely permitted. And then like the mint color is like permitted in limited circumstances. But for each property, it's very different what those limited circumstances are, so it's just.
Yes. Give me a second here.
It'd be page forty in our agenda.
Yeah, I, I just need to log into the
Okay.
To the Zoom meeting.
But while he's doing this, essentially, it's a big oversimplification, like Jared said. And the reasons differ for each, so that's why there's that whole list at the beginning of a chat, attachment B, that sort of gives an overview of the explanation. But yeah, if you have any specific questions.
A, a quick one, Ellie, and thanks for the great map. Very clear, for sure, so, only question is, so what separates a kind of a not permitted but, but potential from a not permitted period, is there some sort of like just defining statements, it's, it seems like some of these not permitted but potential currently have defining statements that make them not permitted, so I'm wondering kind of where that, that gray or pink area comes into play.
Yeah, so those are mostly like our straight zone districts that are higher density, so like medium and high density that, you know, why not just build a duplex there, you know, like you could in theory build a smaller ADU and a primary house.
In, in the red not permitted areas?
In the, in the pink.
The pink, okay.
Yeah, but potential, that's what you're asking about, right?
Yes, just, just, I was just trying to find where that, that line wasn't.
Yeah.
To a degree, it was kind of clear space on the zone district.
And then there are other like PUDs that don't necessarily say, or just like don't say anything about ADUs, but like if enough people from that PUD, you know, came forward with an amendment or something, you know, there's potential, but it would be harder, much harder.
Yeah, thanks.
So, so we've, we've got them.
What the different colors mean with respect to ADUs?
Yeah, so green is permitted, red is not permitted, and then the mint and pink colors are sort of an in between. It just depends on various things.
So, so as an example, Crystal Village PUD, which is kind of the areas around Barber Drive and Oak Run and Miners Park. As an example, ADUs are not permitted in that PUD because the PUD does not list them in their list of permitted uses. And so it's pink as in the PUD could be amended to change the list of permitted uses and to allow an ADU as a use, but that would take over fifty one percent of all the property owners within that PUD to say, we want to change the PUD to do that, and so it's possible, but it's a bit more challenging. Some of the pink or some of the green, light green, the mint ones like Crystal Acres, which is just south of Crystal Village where kind of Oak Run continues, kind of gets to the pedestrian cut through this area here. It allows an ADU, but only due to a staff interpretation and a covenant that says you're allowed to rent to one person who pays money or provides services for lodging. So it's not overly explicit, but it's kind of allowed in certain circumstances. In some of these areas of the original town, I think kind of close to where you guys live, it's permitted in limited circumstances, so you could have an ADU if you have a single family, but it's limited as in it's not permitted to be detached, it has to be attached. And so it's not just a ADU however you want to do it, and so I think those are some of the nuances of the green where the, the, the light green isn't always the same, it's very unique to every property, and same with the light pink, it's still very unique to, to each property, and so that, that's why we're saying this map and this spreadsheet is oversimplification, but at least it provides a starting point for the conversation about ADUs, so hopefully that helps answer your questions, okay?
Well, if we wanted to know in a specific location, what the, what would be permitted, we would have to come in and ask for that.
That, that would be the most effective way of here's a property, please talk with staff about the nuances of that specific property, yes, unfortunately, that's kind of where we're at today. So, so, you know, I hope that provides some clarity on the PUDs. I, I put in here, and I think it's worth noting that some of the town's PUDs were created in the seventies and eighties. I wasn't here in the seventies and eighties, but I don't think as a planning concept, ADUs were very hot of a topic at those times, and they really kind of came more, more back into focus and popularity in general planning, development worlds and kind of the nineties, two thousands, and so I wouldn't be surprised if the omission of ADUs in some of those PUDs was more of just a lack of thought to include them than a omission because we didn't want them in that, there's probably some, and there are some in Carbondale where it is very explicitly prohibited. Like I think Roaring Fork Village has some areas where it's very specifically prohibited, but just wanted to add that context. Now kind of getting into some of the meat and bones of our, our current regulations, so our current ADU regulations, we list single family residences at, within ADU as a minor site plan review. In addition, we have a conditional use or a special use permit process that gets added on to the minor site plan in, uh, different zone districts, so a low density, medium, and mixed use densities have a conditional use permit, and the OTR has a special use permit. The lion's share of the review kind of falls within the minor site plan review process. That process requires an application, requires a public hearing before the planning and zoning commission. And so if someone is wanting to pursue an accessory dwelling unit, they would have to submit, they'd have to wait to get an application through the town's planning process, get a notice public hearing, and there's real time costs associated with, with that process. The conditional use process and the special use process, they don't really add any additional time. There are some additional fees, some additional submittal requirements, but I would say the majority of the process or, or what is perceived as the cumbersome process is really wrapped up in that minor site plan review. As far as kind of overly summarizing our existing regulations, we provided in attachment A, every section of the UDC that currently addresses ADUs. The vast majority of the regulations are located within section four dot four dot four, which are the additional standards speci- for specific accessory uses and structures, and there's a series of, of regulations related to ADUs. To overly summarize that, essentially what we have today is one ADUs permitted per property, they're prohibited for multifamily and live work. They have to have a separate entrance, contain cooking facilities, sleeping facilities, and sanitary facilities. They cannot have more than one bedroom, they are not permitted to have separate ownership or separate utilities. And the size can range from roughly three hundred to eight hundred and fifty square feet depending on the zone district and the size of the primary unit or lot. And then they're permitted to be either attached or detached where allowed, with the exception of the Old Town Residential Zone District, which on that map is the red area, kind of eighth to second, sopris to Euclid, and then second to, to third, kind of Euclid to Garfield. The Old Town Residential Zone District only allows attached ADUs unless you have a historic structure, and then there's a few nuances in there, but by and large, the Old Town Residential Zone District only permits attached ADUs. Regarding parking, our current requirements require two spaces per ADU, but the P and Z can reduce that. Um but the P and Z can reduce that to one space. If the property owner can demonstrate adequate space exists to add an additional parking space. Um for what it's worth, um in twenty twenty four, in order to kind of assist with this. The P and Z as part of the impervious lot coverage discussion um changed the impervious lot coverage requirements. To exempt ADU parking spaces from impervious lot coverage. So currently today, one, two ADU spaces aren't going to negatively impact. A property's maximum lot coverage. We outlined, and I won't go through it, we outlined where the current comprehensive plan kind of discusses ADUs. And provided some context there um and also summarized some recent state uh legislation. That both passed and failed and what the attempts were at the state level. And so kind of getting into our our current code feedback. Um we went through and kind of looked at all the land use applications since twenty fourteen. And we've approved seventeen ADUs. Since in the last decade, um four were approved and not constructed. Two were withdrawn and two are currently under review. Um that does not include. Um ADUs that went directly to a building permit. Those are largely ADUs and CTUs located within RVR. So in RVR, um part of their approval was very specific lots were granted in ADU. And so part of those development plans, um the town has processed those ADUs as building permits. A lot of what you'll see is kind of um North Bridge, those kind of homes there. They're all approved as with a primary and an ADU. Um and so. We we've gathered some of that information and I think um. Kay, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was about forty. ADUs constructed in RVR since two thousand six.
Nineteen ninety eight through, actually, two thousand eighteen.
Ninety eight through two thousand eighteen. I'm just making up years over here. Thank you, Kay.
Hey Jared, I have a quick question on River Valley Ranch. Um there was a number about. The maximum number of ADUs they could have is are those forty units that are?
Forty is it?
Within the PUD. So. So without diving into RVR.
The rest of it's not in play.
Taking RVR at a ten thousand foot level, they part of their PUD approval permitted two types of. ADUs, ADU and caretaker unit. And how they addressed it was they platted individual lots and granted the right to do. One or the other, and then I believe the CTUs changed and they gave certificates. And so um as far as ADUs are required, those are all platted lots. That have the right to build an ADU and that is limited to that number that we see forty. Um there are some additional caretaker units. Um and I don't want to speculate the number of those that have been built. Or could be built because that whole certificate process was very. Lacking in uh in in documentation. And so we we don't have a great semblance of of what's out there. Yep, um when you know. When I kind of tried to look through some of the past files um for the ADU processes. And what we kind of summarized in attachment E, which is the permitted ADUs. We kind of outlined what the application type was, what the planning approval was, is it attached, detached and the size. Generally speaking, it didn't seem like size. Was a restriction for ADUs. There were two instances where the town approved. A larger ADU so that the ADU could meet ADA ADA requirements. Um but by and large, people have been able to construct ADUs within the current. Three hundred to eight hundred and fifty square feet. Um we did notice that the public hearing increased the review time for ADUs. Um where permitted staff, at least in my time, we haven't received very many. Um inquiries about adding ADUs. I could probably say less than ten. Um where not permitted, we've received some questions about it. Um but I think by and large, the community kind of. Has an understanding of of what the current ADU regulations are. With that said, I think modifying the ADU regulations could lead to more people. Wanting, who have been wanting to do ADUs, but maybe have already asked and understand that it's not an option for them. Um but you know, we also have in Carbondale and in a lot of other mountain towns. Um properties that constructed rooms with wet bars that don't have cooking facilities. Uh but have bathrooms and they, you know, for lack of better terms, essentially serve as an ADU. But they don't have that cooking facility which. Creates it, whi- which which moves it from a a portion of a home that you're renting out to a roommate to a ADU. And so those, you know, quote unquote bandit ADUs. You know, in some instances, I'm sure after the building permit was was closed out, somebody went and put a hot plate in or. Put in a a cooking facility without a proper permit. I'm sure there are those properties around town. This isn't intended to say. There's some sort of code enforcement issue, but more just to make you guys aware, right? When we're talking about ADUs, we're talking about those legal units. The town has permitted properly. Um and so kind of getting into the meat and bones of of what I'm hoping we can discuss tonight is, you know. I tried to take it and I I tried to take a a pass and say, how can we break down this conversation into a couple big buckets? And then ask some questions to maybe help dialogue along. And so on pages six, seven and eight of the staff memo, you'll kind of see first is process. Um with regard to the current process, minor site plan, conditional use and um. Special use, you know, I think it's really worth this commission. Kind of looking introspectively and saying. Do we find that the processes that we have put ADUs through have kind of improved outcomes? Or have the processes kind of stamped the outcomes that we would have gotten otherwise? And I think that's really important because it leads to. Is this public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission really a necessary step for all ADUs? Or there's certain types of ADUs that um maybe can just go straight to a permit if it's permitted. Um so you know, in the next question, we outline, you know, a few different types like ADUs without exterior. Building modifications, say a basement ADU inside the existing building or what about an ADU? That's a addition but doesn't expand the footprint like a an ADU above a existing garage. ADUs where there's attached, but it's part of a building addition or a detached ADU. Are there different types of ADUs where maybe the Planning and Zoning Commission says some additional process may be warranted? And some where less process could be warranted. And so I think that's a conversation that I think is worth this commission having. One thing I've heard from this commission others is how do neighbors stay informed about what might be occurring? Um without that public hearing, that formal public hearing process, a lot of neighbors might not know until. The construction company shows up on site and starts digging and then asks questions and and then they become aware of of. What's occurring. And so I think it's worth this commission again discussing. Is that okay? Is that acceptable for Carbondale or um is some level of notification uh better? And then kind of get into the next bucket, ADU locations. You know, I think it's something that we've heard, staff, we've heard loud and clear that there's a desire from the Historic Preservation Commission. From the Plan Zoning Commission, from the Board of Trustees to permit. Attached and detached ADUs. In all zone districts. Um and there might be some unique circumstances such as. Um or where where a detached may or may not be, require some additional review. Um such as if it's. Um on a property that contains a structure of merit of historic and older building. Um and so I think there is some conversation about that, but we also just want to check in with this group and. And make sure that that um. That attached detached, everyone's on the same board, that yes, allowing those um throughout town. Is a good outcome of this process. You know, kind of as I discussed earlier, ADU size and design. Currently, the smallest ADU that we've approved was three hundred and sixty square feet. Um since twenty fourteen, but you know, we've also heard a lot of renewed interest in tiny homes and really kind of. Redefining what's considered livable in twenty twenty five. And so, you know, it's really a check in point. Is is that three hundred square foot minimum still appropriate? Or are there other better tools that the town has at its disposal to? Um permit a small ADU such as just utilizing what the building code requires for space. So I think that's a a pretty pertinent topic for this group to discuss. Um and then on kind of the flip side. How does the code address the maximum? So right now loosely, our code is about thirty three percent. Of the primary home is the maximum size for an ADU. Where that thirty three percent rule is kind of broken is roughly. On properties under fifteen hundred square feet primary homes. Um where the town just basically says regardless of how small that is, you can have up to a five hundred square foot. Primary or ADU. And then as you go larger, really that um. Twenty five hundred, twenty six hundred square foot primary residence. Is kind of where the the town's cap is. So a three thousand square foot or a four thousand square foot primary home. It's permitted ADU is less than one third of its primary residence. And so, you know, I think it's worth discussing. Is that ratio of two thirds primary to one third ADU an appropriate ratio? Or is that something that should be reconsidered? Um does the town want to allow multiple bedroom ADUs currently limited to one? Are there instances where a two bedroom ADU could be? Could be reasonable. Parking, you know, quite simply. Is two spaces appropriate? Is one space more appropriate? Is zero spaces appropriate? Um I would highlight that that generally speaking. The more, the larger number of bedrooms in a unit tends to lead to. Multiple non-related households living in those units. Um not one hundred percent of the case, but there's a greater connection between a two bedroom unit having, say, a couple and a. A single person or multiple singer people and you might have more vehicles on that property. Um than a one bedroom or a studio, which is going to lend itself to a single person or a couple. Um so worth discussing. Um and then one thing this group has discussed a few times is. How does an ADU get used? Um does the town want to consider prohibiting? Short term rentals in ADUs. Um in our. Attachment E, we went through and said, have we ever issued a short term rental license on that property? I think we came up with. Two of the seventeen properties had a short term rental license. So I don't think it's a pervasive. ADUs are all being used as short term rentals, but um worth this commission having that conversation. And then lastly, are there any other big topics that we missed? That is really going to be helpful in us preparing. Draft code language for you guys at a future meeting. And so just kind of summarizing my conversation. Ultimately, again, what we're looking for is feedback, dialogue and opportunity for the public to provide comments. And a continuation of this public hearing until September twenty fifth. So that we have time to work on some some next information for you, some draft language. Um and so we're not intending to solve it all tonight, just getting some good feedback so we can further the dialogue. Happy to answer any questions. I know there's a lot of information. Um but hopefully it's kind of an iterative discussion tonight. Thank you. That was a lot. Uh first off, staff, uh Eli, Jared, Kay, that was an awesome comprehensive. Set. So thank you for all the hard work. I think that was what this question asked for and much more. So uh it was super helpful. Good to hear that we don't have to answer every single one of your questions tonight. I didn't bring a pillow. Quick question on process tonight, how would? A lot of folks are here, some of them might just be here as listeners, some might be here to provide input. How can we weave everybody in a meaningful way? What is staff's um recommendation or request on that? Yeah, so so my recommendation kind of regarding public hearing, public comment would be. You know, outside of technical questions, um would be to open it up, allow the public to provide comment. Um and then close it for the night for this meeting, have some dialogue with this commission. And then um ultimately continue the public hearing, but be prepared to reopen it. Um at the next meeting, because I think as more information comes out, people will have continued conversations, but. Since everyone's here, I really think it's appropriate to give them the opportunity and I. I I'd even encourage you to say maybe relaxing the three minute. Rule um a little bit if if people have some additional comments that they'd like to make. Um I I think it's, again, we're not trying to solve it tonight, so giving people the opportunity to share their thoughts is is beneficial. Great. So before we get into that, just want to look to you all on this commission to see if you have any clarifying questions, technical questions. Thing, anything that came up during Jared's uh presentation. Monologue, diatribe, uh however you want to package that. Um I thought that was, it was very helpful to me to get kind of in the game here. But just checking in with the five you and I'm sorry, Jared and Cindy, looking at you as well up there. Anything else and you all would like to hear or clarify before we move into opening a public comment? Yeah, Franko.
I I guess I just have one clarifying thing about, because the PUD thing. We have a lot of PUDs that have a lot of limiting factors. And we talked about, you know, in the code, it says uh PUD that is. Page twenty eight, the UDC, all PUD amendment applications submitted by a property owner. Shall be signed by at least fifty percent of the owners, is what you said. Um and then it goes on. Saying the planning commission may also initiate an amendment to PUD at a regular meeting. I'm just, you know, curious, you know, if we do want to have, you know, more. It's not a takings, having an allowed use. So I'm just curious if that's. Just a point of clarification.
It's it's something that um I think is worth the town as a whole discussing. I think ultimately we would want to look to the trustees who are elected to determine if they want to. Go down the path of modifying people's PUDs for them. That's a very slippery slope. I mean, PUDs are essentially contract zoning and. I mean, PUDs are essentially contract zoning and um, the the reason we require fifty-one percent is to make sure that the majority of the people within that PUD support the changes that are made. The town, as you point out, could go through and say, we're going to arbitrarily change people's PUDs because we think this is right for them. Um, but I do think that is a slippery slope and that's kind of more of a policy decision that I think the trustees need to make. And if that is something that they want to do, then yes, we could go down that route where they're saying, okay, P and Z, go initiate these PUD amendments and do this work on their behalf.
On that topic, and I'm not sure if Franco, maybe been there before your time. Correct me here or anyone if if my memory is off, but it was at our our last check in. Um, it was discussed and I believe Erica and Ben were more aligned with more of a grassroots approach that actually included kind of a door knocking uh, boots on the ground in lieu of kind of top down management on that. So is is that anyone else remember that comment or my committing a head shake from Nick? Kim wasn't there.
That's that's correct. That was kind of the, how do we help the communities determine if they want to do this? And then how can we make that PUD amendment process quicker and easier? And so I think if that is something this board ultimately wants to um, thinks thinks is is worthwhile pursuing, I would encourage this group to make a recommendation as part of whatever code amendments to to do something like that and then put that decision kind of at the feet of the trustees.
And I think one more comment was, is there an entry PUD, kind of an easy entry that we could identify that would be easiest, like maybe Elliot's, it's one of your pink zones most likely and perhaps a smaller pink zone, right, to the the fifty-one percent achievement rate would be. You know, if if you know, folks are walking and knocking, it's it's something more reasonable than good question. Thank you. My really quick minor question, Jared. Aesthetics on PUDs, whether attached or detached, is that handled anywhere specifically or is it assumed that is carried under, you know, facade, you know, slope, roof pitch? Things of that is kind of design. Is it assumed that that falls under main structure at this point? Or is that something that is handled somewhere else? Pardon my my lack of knowledge there?
We, you know, design issues, we'd really look to the residential design standards of the development code and apply those no different than a new home or an addition to a home.
Thanks.
So if there are additional design standards related to ADUs, then that's probably something that we would want to add within this, you know, if it's something related to, say, compatibility with the primary home or.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Jared, if I may, um, off of that comment, um, any direction from the town as far as what they're looking to do with the adoption of the Colorado wildfire resiliency code? Um, I know that is kind of in discussion amongst other municipalities and I think it applies to maybe that as um, kind of design element um, and with increase in footprint, wanted to see if the town has any thoughts on or direction.
Yeah, we really haven't dove into it much. I know Aaron, um, our building official was at a a meeting over in um, Vale, I believe yesterday discussing it, him and Carl with the Fire Protection District are kind of diving into that, but I believe we have until April. If I'm not mistaken, when the state regulations.
Yeah, a year from July is when municipalities have to adopt and then I think they get a few months to then begin enforcing.
Yeah, so I, we, we haven't really dug into it much to have considered how it would impact this, but something we can do.
Jesse, do you, do you have a specific uh, thought to that point? Like increasing footprint or?
Yeah, um, yeah, in their their forty-three page um, document that they put out by the Division of Fire Prevention and Control through the state of Colorado, they do mention additions or alterations having to meet um, i- if the, it says, when the work increases the footprint of the existing structure by five hundred square feet or greater, it then triggers meeting the wildfire resiliency code. Um, and so municipalities have the option to either adopt the wildfire resiliency code put out by the state of Colorado or go to um, a higher code interpretation of more strict guidelines. And so I know some local municipalities are kind of juggling to see whether they adopt or if they go a little bit above and beyond. And so it would be in relation to footprint.
Can I just, could you walk me through the five hundred square foot trigger? Does that trigger uh, fire resiliency for the entire property?
The way that I interpret it is it has to um, apply to the five hundred square foot addition.
Only the five hundred square foot. So you wouldn't have to then remodel your entire house because of the five hundred square foot plus ADU?
No, my my interpretation is that the five hundred square feet and Jared, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but um, my interpretation is that that five hundred square feet is what has to meet the new wildfire resiliency code.
Would would that include also its surrounding fuels? So offsets to like the bump out, let's assume there's a bump out, it's on an internal ADU.
Yes, sir. Yeah. So that would have to meet not only the the building.
The site.
Yeah.
For ladder fuels and.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know enough to talk intellectually about it, so I'm going to go with what Jesse says until I know more.
He sounded really smart to that whole section. Very impressive. Jesse, thank you for bringing that up. Good thoughts there. Anybody else? Nick?
Go ahead. Sorry. Um, I had a question that might be a Jared or Ellie. When I'm looking at the map and looking at what's permitted now and then there's permitted with limited circumstances. For the permitted now, I'm seeing like roughly five neighborhoods. Do you know in terms of like number of lots, we're talking about basically changing the rules for, because it's it's not the whole town. Um, I just wondered any idea? I haven't counted lots yet. Because it's 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 a rather small percentage overall of the town.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't think we um, dove into that, but we can come, we can come back with with some rough guesstimations for what that is.
It's actually a pretty, it's, I actually appreciate your question, Ann, because I mean, if you think about just taking net numbers from the pink and the green areas, identifying those and then looking at it in terms of either one extra car, one extra parking space or for utility planning and management for the town potential impacts for you you know, kind of peak usage um, or peak draw. And we already saw this year that we had impacts to water. Um, so identifying those things, you know, it it's it's an intriguing kind of just, I think.
Yeah, I just.
Math check.
I, because of the cost to build, I don't know that it's a huge impact um in general, but because of the way our zoning works, it's very concentrated. Which could have infrastructure impact certainly.
Right. And and we also remember that we are also talking about a parking study soon. So again, to step that point of extra vehicles in town, how might, you know, extrapolate rather quickly, a a maximum that might come from that. Great, uh, Nick. So is that all in or? Okay, thanks.
Uh, Jared, could you help, help, help me out? Um, and walk us through what you know, your findings on state legislation? I know you you touched on it a little bit, but I'd love to get a little bit more detailed on any current existing policies that we may want to look at as precedent that would help us not have to reinvent the wheel on all of this.
Um, yeah, you know, I I I was a little more up to speed on all the details of House Bill um, twenty-four. Um, but I I think the all of the state proposals that would have um, permitted ADUs and a use by right where where single family residents are permitted, would have preempted PUDs and private covenants from restricting ADUs. Would have limited a local jurisdictions from applying any sort of objective standards like size or design compatibility or anything like that. None of those were passed. So I really think what what was passed at the state level was really very limited to um, kind of pushing more of the urban front range communities to allowing ADUs as a use as opposed to permitting as a use everywhere. You know, a lot of, a lot of communities don't even consider ADUs as a use. And so I think that was really more of the focus of, I believe, House Bill twenty-four, but if someone else knows um, better, I'm happy to hear that. Um, otherwise I can come back at the next meeting and and have a little more detail on exactly that.
Is 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 uh, the uh, Senate Bill twenty-four proposed as, was as proposed, ADUs would have been permitted as a use by right in all zone districts where single family detached would have been permitted? Is that at all close to what we're talking about doing? I mean, it sounds like HPC might be talking about something similar.
We, we kind of already have that.
There you have it.
I mean, I I wouldn't say, you know, I would say we we allow them. We allow them with conditional use permits, special use permits, and we restrict the size, but we really already allow the the one area that we don't is PUDs. And so um, I think what would have of that state legislation would have been most beneficial to Carbondale is that preemption of PUDs. Um, and that would have allowed us to not even have to touch people's PUDs. The state law would have said this is a use by right and um, your PUD can't prohibit it. So um, so that probably was was honestly the the most attractive component. There was a lot of other stuff with those um, House and State Bills that required you know, a certain percentage of of ADUs to be built and monitoring and reporting back to the state. And there's a lot of um, administrative stuff tied up in some of those, which was maybe a little less attractive to Carbondale, but um, but yeah. I can get more details if if you feel like you need more details on some of that state legislation that ultimately didn't kind of move forward.
I like the idea of, you know, adopting policy. Um, and I like the idea of seeing good precedent. Um, I also like the idea of not wasting our time. So, you know, Bill twenty-four comes along again and it gets passed and it would save us a lot of time. Trying to crack that egg on our own. So if it's coming up again.
Yeah, I I propose. I haven't heard anything at the state level um, in twenty-five that's moving ADU conversations. I I think they might have had that in twenty-four and didn't get the support and said, we're going to move on to other housing related topics.
All right. Any other questions before we open up to for public comment?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, Jared, I know we kind of just talked about this with Franco's comment, but just from personal experience working on uh, or there was like a public comment at one point where somebody came in and their PUD has been inactive since, you know, like nineteen ninety-eight or whatever. You know, how what's town strategy is this like, you know, for BOT or P and Z to go to some of these inactive PUDs and approach them? You know, like, uh, do we have a list of property owners? Like, how do we fully address some of these dead PUDs in order to get them to get involved? Because what if, you know, we go door knocking and there's like STRs or um, you know, long-term rentals and things like that? Like, how do we accurately go about trying to get people to change their language of their PUDs when there's let's say sizable lots that would accept PUD or an ADU, sorry?
Yeah, so um, just kind of a a couple of clarifications. So it's really the HOA that's dead and defunct. The PUD is still very active and applicable. Um, and so yes, you know, we can pull owner records from Garfield County. We can do direct mailing. I think there's a lot of stuff you can have um, community advocates who live within that neighborhood knock on their neighbors' properties. So it's not so much the town and the government coming by and asking people if they want to amend their PUD and potentially blowing the whistle on a illegal ADU. So I think there's stuff in there and and I think just to kind of put that conversation in in a bit of a a a capsule and and maybe move it over to the parking lot section of this conversation is if that's something that we want to pursue, I really think it's recommending that to the trustees. And we can have more in-depth conversations about what those processes could look like to help communities who desire this or the top down approach. Um, but you know, I don't want to spend too much time with the the code language, really kind of going through those. You know, how do we get defunct HOAs to kind of notify property owners that they could do this?
Yeah, I I think respectfully, it's probably, it's a a good thing to touch on with like BOT, but for tonight's purposes, more of the micro rather than the macro. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Trying to go. And Cindy, I saw your arm up. Did you, was that for a question or?
No, I was. No, it was not.
Okay.
I'm good.
Got it. All right. With that, um, like to open the uh, open this meeting for public comment. Um, and we can relax the rules a little bit, but we would ask for, I I think I'm going to say like, I would still appreciate if you keep it under, let's say, five minutes or just keep it succinct. And if somebody ahead of you has already made a comment, um, respectfully, let's let that comment go and and move on to different topics. Um, but we keep it to single discussion around topics. Um, for tonight, just out of time and respect for for all of us here. Um, when you do come up, please, uh, your name and your address for the record. Please. So with that, whoever feels so compelled to be number one, come on down.
Evening. Uh, my name is Brad Zeigl. I live at six ten Lincoln Avenue, just stone's throw away from here. We're we're a PUD. Um, we've had to go do, become a PUD, um, Lincoln Avenue in order to get back to eighteen hundreds plating of that property. So um, and with in that, we did allow PUD or allowed ADUs to happen. We were kind of late to the draw, our our family to putting in an ADU. Where everyone else kind of did one on the block um, in in a base, you know, underneath or above a garage kind of thing. Ours is on grade and um, and then, you know, as an architect, I um, get into the weeds. My whole life's about getting in the weeds. Um, and when what's it look like and all that stuff? Um, but I think the thing that is, as someone who has an ADU, it's really about the people that it serves. Um, and it's and it's um, ours is on grade, so it's served a young young man who just had his uh, became a paraplegic um, in a car accident. That was about fifteen years ago and he went, got, was able to go to CMC, change, get a bunch of education, change his focus and his his way of making a living. Um, we've had young teen mothers and we've got, been paid through the county. We had Sarah who ran Five Point for about five years. She lived in ours. She finally left because she was on the road all the time. Um, we we now have a a young woman there who's running a small business in Carbondale. Uh, we've had seniors who have been waiting for senior housing. Um, it's just a mixture of humanity um that kind of is it lives in the this kind of a unit. And I just think that that's an important piece to what they offer to a community. And and it's a it's been a a very u- unique opportunity. It's um, you know, personally, it's, you know, it it was a huge help during oh eight to ten to keep the our house um by having that income. Um, and and that's that's not a that's not been a trivial thing. As as the years roll by and we have this little safety valve that if something happened to my wife or myself, we can go live out in the apartment, you know, we can go live out in the ADU. And uh it's on grade. It's got a handicap bath, shower. And, you know, it's it's this little thing that you kind of stash away, right? And so it's 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 a very interesting element to have on on your property as you age and as, you know, time evolves and to and to keep keep that option for us as a community like Carbondale and th- those expenses keep rising and rising. Um, and as someone who's getting, you know, closer and closer to seventy. So um um it's it's an interest. It's a really interesting little thing. And I know a lot of people are able to to build them and use them and all, you know, we built it ourselves and, you know, chopped out the concrete and did all that stuff. So, you know, the sweat equity piece also exists on an ADU because it's so little. And so it's it's an interesting uh opportunity for a homeowner. And we we've been very grateful that we had it. So thank you. Thanks for all the consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kenny Titler. I live on two oh six South Third Street. And first of all, thank you for taking up this ADU conversation. I was wondering if I could ask a question about some of the restrictions that still exist in OTR. So I've been trying to like draw my plans, see what I could actually build. And the fact that in the OTR, the per impervious is forty two percent. And that's compared to low density residential being fifty percent. And that forty two percent is very restrictive of being able to build an ADU still in old town, old town. And I know the idea of a lot of this is to allow for those restrictions that have been placed to be remedied. And as I looked at and looked through the UDC and looked at all of the different ways that we could get some impervious back through the deck. What you're allowed to get for your deck for your square foot of your house. And the only way that I would really be able to build is to rip out my existing drive from my two parking spots that I need on my house, tear that down and use the exemption to put in a pervious paving system. And it seems like if it was similar to what is in the low density residential, that would offer up another four hundred and forty square feet of building possibility without having to take away what has been sitting there for fifty years in my property and then just have to redo it to be able to put that in. And so I appreciate the six hundred square foot exemption for parking for ADU spots. But my house, which isn't necessarily a very big footprint, which does have this garage that was way back on the property from when it was built in the nineteen forties, I believe. Still is very restrictive on what I'm able to do and even following all of the codes taken advantage of the pervious exemption for the driveway system. It still would only allow me to build uh three hundred and seventy one foot ADU in that sense. So if that's something that could be considered and looked at and talked about, I think that would be very beneficial for people who are looking to build in OTR, because I think with the current forty two percent impervious limit is going to be very difficult for people to build as is. So again, thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Bob Schultz, three five four Fawn Drive, which is outside of town limits. I'll try and be as quick as I can, but it's about thirty years I've been working on this issue. So including River Valley Ranch. Uh, the units there, we actually added the original submission was for six hundred units and we added the sixty five deed restricted, uh, which we didn't even have regulations back then for that. And the caretaker and the uh ADUs in the regular homes. At any rate, uh, this is a big universe, uh, the on the topic, but what we're talking about, I think, as was pointed out, is a pretty small part of town, maybe less than a thousand lots. It to my interest is in affordable ADUs. Uh, so if I was doing something, I would be looking at creating a section of the code for affordable ADUs. Uh, the market is developing rental units for people who make a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty percent of AMI. There are lots of them out there now. And that's pretty much where an ADU that's built for a market is going to rent. Unless you're somebody like Brad or I, uh, we rent ours for eleven hundred a month to somebody who cares for elders as they're dying who grew up in this town and can't afford to live here. But at any rate, uh, if we did, if you did and the town did decide that you were interested in uh affordable ADUs, that involves a deed restriction. And that involves the town doing something, right? So I always talk to people about affordable housing that there are four levers that you can pull. And if you want to make something affordable, you need to pull a couple of those levers. So one of them is land and a typical deal, every deal is different, but maybe ten percent of the total project budget is land. And then there's a soft cost, people like me some of you, and we maybe twenty percent uh by the time you're through with architecture engineering. The fees that go to Jared and about ten percent, the finance cost and sixty percent construction, rough numbers. So if we want to make something affordable, we have to do things that pull those levers, right? And right now we have a very passive program because we don't have any deed restrictions. It's generating about one and a half units a year. I think for most people, that's probably okay, yeah. Unless you're interested in affordability. So to be fair to the landowner, you you need to give them something if they're going to take a deed restriction on their ADU. So some of the things that have been talked about and been used in different places, starting at kind of the low effort end of the spectrum, lower parking, a streamlined review, an administrative review, uh, rather, so that gets you about a quarter of a lever. Right? So we're we're working on the time. Time is money. So we're speeding it up a little bit. So out of that, you know, ten percent of the finance, you know, we we may save two and a half percent. So then we go to the next level if we want to uh affect more change. Waving fees, water fees, sewer fees, park fees, planning fees, building fees, administrative review is another perk. And then we can start talking about, okay, what eh what's the maximum AMI? Right? So maybe it's a hundred and twenty percent maximum AMI and the deed restriction. And then another strategy is uh subsidizing people legalizing their bandit units. And that's been used in places and and uh you're you're participating in the improvement of their home to make it safe. And in the mix of that, you're asking for a deed restriction in exchange for that financial participation. And then uh the one that I don't know that we're big enough for, but I have a real interest in is uh, there's a modular outfit over uh by uh Blaina Vista uh fading west. And some governments have chosen to pre-approve units. You could have a small, a three hundred and sixty foot unit, uh, six hundred and fifty square foot unit, a unit above a garage. You basically have three plans and you go ahead and improve them. And then there's no site plan or building permit. Uh, you come in, you still get a building permit, but it isn't the twelve weeks or whatever the current weight is. And because we've already reviewed this building, right? They're all going to be the same and you can plop it down in one of these kind of places on your lot. I know John would have an opinion about that in OTR. Uh, but those are the kind of things that so in the course of that, in addition to the time piece, the other levers that you can reduce is the soft cost because it goes to basically zero. Uh, the finance cost because you're going to permanent financing instead of your construction loan. And then, of course, construction, which uh in most cases you can save a little bit. Um, especially if fading west or whoever it is can just crank these out. Uh, you can get a better deal. So anyways, I just wanted to offer those uh depending upon what your interest is. If it is for something that's focused on affordable, when I read the the notes, sometimes there's talk about affordability and then other times there's other things. The one thing I was relieved to hear that only two have applied for STR, because I think that's a horrible uh use of of uh ADUs. So thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
My turn. Hi, um, I'm John Williams. I'm at seven seven eight Silpas Avenue. And I'll keep this pretty quick and simple, hopefully. This is a complicated issue and in my opinion, the more simple we make this for the whole town, the better it's going to be for everybody. Um, so I think it needs to be a a use by right uh to eliminate any of the special or conditional use timeframe kind of thing, do a minor site review for the for the uh with the staff and have a a public hearing to all the neighbors will know what's going on and keep that part simple. It needs to be equal through the entire town. Um, all the impervious surface percentages need to be based on the lot size and keep it equal from one zone to another. Instead of having this part of town at this percentage of this part of town at a different percentage. And the same deal with attached and detached uh units, it needs to be equal through the entire town, keeping it simple for everybody all the way through is one rule for everybody. You don't have to figure out what your zone district is. Reducing the size of the minimum size of the the unit, um, the tiny homes. People you can live in a really, you know, you don't need a big mansion. If you're in an ADU, you're renting something. You don't need a lot of space. Uh, a lot of these are going to be for the for the young ski bones that come and decide to stay for for the rest of the year. I call them bones because I didn't do it. But um anyway, we're not really bombs there. Well, half of you probably did that yourself. And let's see, what's the other one? Oh, and it is a complicated issue that you guys are gotten to deal with. And it's all divided up between different zone districts. And I really uh would like to see you simplify it and make it equal throughout the town. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Do you have a public comment or are you here as listeners?
No, um, everybody covered everything I was going to say.
Okay.
Yeah, I I'm Jim Gah. I live outside the town, but I have property on uh in town. It occurred to me that uh if I heard you correctly uh about one bedroom per ADU, uh, there should be some leeway there. Because I can imagine a situation where I'm old, my wife may have predeceased me. I need some help. It turns out the only help I can get uh is a couple. Or a a woman with a teenage son and they want two bedrooms. So I think some leeway there would be appropriate.
Thank you for that perspective. Thank you all. A lot of good insight. Um, I I think I see I you had us all very captivated with the with your perspectives and your knowledge. And so thank you all for showing up tonight. Yeah, really grateful. Appreciate it. Uh, with that, um motion to close public comment for this evening.
I would just like to ask that I thought.
Never mind.
Brad's comments were superb.
Gold star for Brad. Any other accolades before we close public comment for this evening?
Motion to close.
Sorry, real quick, are we are we motioning to continue the public hearing or just close it for the?
We are we are closing it for this evening, but we will, we can reopen it um at the next, was my understanding.
Awesome. Thank you. I just want to make sure we had our addiction, right?
Yep. Motion to close by Nick, second?
Second.
Second by Jesse. Thank you all. All right, folks, um. So let's see here. Quick set of ground rules. I know how talkative and intelligent this group is, so I'd like to extend with respect, a little bit of the concise request. We we've we've had a a nice intro extensive conversation already on this as a primer. Um, again, thank you all. So again, respectfully, would love to um meet our nine PM adjournment tonight. So if if we could um have this, so we got it's about eight twenty three, let's just let's um, I'm sorry, let's have this conversation by nine o'clock. Is that is that fair with everybody?
Yes, please.
All right. I'm gonna
Just go with one.
I'm gonna ask Jared to be the uh the bulldog on on time as he's so good with. Thank you, Jared, for uh the checking on there, by the way. Appreciate the help.
No problem.
All right, um. So there's two ways we can do this. We can go around and do a quick kind of check in as far as if there is a a place that we feel as a group we'd like to start with this, or we can just start with the questions as prepared by staff and work our way through that systematically and cleanly. Raise of hands, is there anyone that has a pressing item that they think should pre uh predate the the questions or precede the questions?
Since since we do only have was it thirty five minutes about? Can we get the low hanging fruit, you think? What we could probably all agree on? I think last time around when we talked was maybe like the short term rental thing or something of the lower hanging fruit that we could have staff already kind of direct and and get the code amendment going.
Um.
I don't know.
I guess it's a bit of a bit subjective as far as low hanging. I appreciate that and I would likely agree perhaps with you, Franco. However, these kinds of approaches can can keep us going for quite a while. I'm looking at all of you.
I'd like to work from the outside in. We wor- we worry about parking. We worry about impervious. We worry about attached versus detached. And if we run out of time, I think we can get into regulation of size and everything like that afterwards. That's my suggestion.
Okay, Nick, suggestion? Kim? Anne? Jesse, is that okay with you? I would like to add parking to that as well. So uh quickly. Uh, did you? Sorry. Uh, your list again, Jared, please?
Uh, working from the outside in, so that would be parking slash impervious and then attached versus detached. I think those are easy ones to take out within thirty minutes. I think we can all move from there.
Thank you for your efficiency. Uh, so with parking. Who wants to begin that one? So they're right right now, we require a two parking spaces. Who wants to begin that one? So they're right, right now we require a two parking spaces per ADU. Uh, however, uh, parking pads do not count against impervious percentages. Nick?
Go from two to one.
Who else agrees on that one? Raise a hand, show of hands. Is there anybody who? So we have a full over here, Cindy, or you're got a hand on that, Jared's got a hand on that. Franco, where are you with parking?
I'm of the modern day planner where uh, no parking.
Okay, we've got an aggressor in the crowd. I like your style.
I do have one comment that I think, you know, I, I think we're still limited to one bedroom. ADUs, I think there would be leeway or I think special review of additional parking. If it was a two-bedroom unit like um, the previous towns, uh, town member just expressed. I think one is clearly enough. I think we have enough of a parking problem that we don't want to overburden everybody. And I know uh, Mr. Michonne would agree that the less cars, the better.
How many vehicles? Strike that.
Thank you for pointing out the.
I live out in the country. I'm a country now.
I, I am just going to go put out there, uh, the statement I've, I've made earlier and uh, I guess my, my belief. It's a, it's a lot easier to change rules than it is to change them back. Um, we can, we can ease our way in better or easier than we can ease our way out. So, which is I appreciate the concept of a car-free hoverboard environment, hoverboard only. Maybe we start with one. But also there is a parking study coming as well that might also work to inform this. So that might help us the rest of the way in some cases, or help us identify ways where we could get to zero. Or how we might handle multiple bedrooms. But at this time, I think Jared and, Jared and Ally, uh, there is a consensus that at least at a minimum, we're dropping this down to one. Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah, other direction, too many fingers.
One per bedroom or one per unit?
Well, right now we only have a one bedroom, so we're sticking to the one, to the kind of the, the current state. Sound good?
To be continued once additional bedroom topic resumes.
And or parking study, uh, to help us guide that.
Yes, yep.
Great. Um, next, impervious. Who is a passionate about that? Like they would like to step into that, um, or entry statement?
So I would definitely step into uh, that. In Town of Carbon, so my understanding of pervious versus impervious traditionally is an effort to. Retain uh, stormwater on site. But that is not what we are doing in Town of Carbondale. We're not even close to that. So I think we, we really need to revisit the intent of pervious versus impervious. Understand what Town of Carbondale is trying to achieve with that. Um, because it's really working against us from, from a pro-development perspective. With, there are plenty of other ways to retain stormwater that are much more efficient than pervious or impervious. So that's all I have to say about that.
Um, do you have a direction that you'd like to, like to initiate for us on this talk?
I would like to somehow find a way to prevent the pervious debate from. From imposing restrictions on ADUs.
Okay, so, so if I'm hearing that correctly, so, so similarly to an ADU. Parking needs not impacting impervious calculations. Perhaps what you're saying is the construction of an ADU on a property should not count, be counted against impervious. Limitations.
Right, as one scenario would, would put it. Yeah, I think that's right.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to just distill it down.
No, but given that condition, that's, I think that's the direction. I mean, I'm thinking more, thinking about it more broadly, but yes, in that condition, I think that's exactly right.
Okay, so let's start there. Um, I'm going to start with folks on screen, Cindy. Your feelings on that one?
I, I agree with you. I, I mean, the impervious, we should lower it or not counted against an ADU. Doesn't make any sense to me.
Great. Um, and before I go to you, Jared, I'm just gonna um, also put out there the idea of the varied impervious percentages across town. I appreciated that comment tonight. So something else we can also put into this is a discussion. Jared, where are you on this topic?
Uh, I just want to make sure I'm understanding Nick's comment, um, more appropriately. Are we talking about just the parking or the ADU structure itself?
The structure itself and parking.
Well, I think they're tethered. I mean, it's, it's like a little triumvirate that, that, that needs to be met. All three need to be met. And, and I think it's, it's nuanced and complicated. But I would like to, you know, and then determine differently in different zone districts. I agree with John's comment that it should be simplified for sure. And that way it would be easier to understand.
What, so is the, the impervious across the board for zone districts or the, which part do you believe should be simplified specifically?
Well, what John said is, is it should be the same in every zone district.
Percentage calc.
Percentage calc, which, which makes some sense. And then the percentage calc, I really would like to get down, like drill down into understand. And again, I'm making this more complicated, so forgive me for that. But I really don't understand the intent behind pervious and impervious surface in Town of Carbondale. Because, and if you could, please shed some light on that, I would love. I think it has more to do with landscaping than it does.
Quite, quite simply, impervious lot coverage is the town's way of. Controlling the amount of development that can occur on a property by zone district. And so the reason we don't have a single lot coverage for every residential zone district is. There would be very little difference between residential low density and residential high density. You could have the same amount of development on both lots. And so yes, there is a storm water component to it. But I would say in Carbondale, it more functions as that way of saying, how much can you build on your property? No different than say a floor area ratio in another community. Where it says, you just, yes, you have height, you have setbacks. But within that box, there's only so much stuff you can put in there. In other communities, and I know I talked about this in pervious lot coverage in other communities I've worked in. All they cared about were the buildings. They didn't care about driveways. They didn't care about patios and. Other stuff in Carbondale, our code cares about those things. Um, and so. Yeah, I, I think that's the lion's share of the intent. And so although, you know. What Kenny's comment was referring to was the difference between OTR and residential low density. Having different, when largely they're very similar types of, of. Development patterns. I don't think he was saying everything should be increased to sixty percent, which is what our residential high density zone district allows. It was more of a, if someone can build a single-family home in the low-density don't, zone district on a lot my size, that's. Say fifty-two percent. Why is my property, which is located a block away in the OTR zone district that has the same single-family resident? Now restricted to forty-two percent. So I think that was kind of some of his comments. Hopefully it helps provide some context, Nick.
So, okay, yeah, it does. Thank you for that. I, I guess to answer the question then I, it, it by def, then by definition. We would be talking about reducing the, the perv, the pervious burden.
In OTR.
In, in, in OTR and potentially in all zone districts that. Allow. ADUs to some degree, but to, to, to what extent is, you know, really getting more into the weeds, probably not. Appropriate for tonight. So just reducing the impervious burden across the board.
And, and, and not to counter that at all, but just to put one point out, it's just to consider this group. When we do reduce that number, one of the tertiary impacts is that we do reduce. Root zone and canopy opportunities. So, so, uh, so to go to your, your, your landscape comment. Um, there is a downstream impact, no pun intended, with stormwater. Um, that would, could begin to, um. We would see overtime or could see overtime and reduce in large tree, tall tree canopy potential within the town. So not.
Yep.
Perhaps as important as people having a place to live. But as far as the long-term character of Carbondale, um, something to consider.
But if we reduce the parking requirement from two to one, then we're gaining that back.
Potentially, yeah, there, there, there could be, I think, what we could say is there could be trade-offs.
Trade-offs.
Right. We, we could look at different tools to help recover some of that.
Yeah.
Um, absolutely.
So Jared, both, parking and structure, just reducing the burden generally.
So Jared, back to you. Sorry, we, we, we wandered away from you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I do, I do think that like parking and, you know. Site accessories and development like that don't really need to be counted towards. The impervious areas. I think if we're looking at the building itself, especially if it's detached. Like I would personally like to see like a fifty percent rate on that, because then you would be. You would have a limitation of like what your lot coverage would be. And I think that still protects the character that we're looking for of each of these lots, you know, forty-two percent in OTR is there for reason. And um, for longevity of that neighborhood, I would assume was the reasoning behind that. But I think if you're, if you're just gonna wipe the entirety of the ADU for the. Availability of streamlining the process, I think you're hurting those neighborhoods and those communities. So I would, I would like to see like a fifty percent impact on that, you know, it. If you're at six hundred square foot footprint, that allows you to develop a larger building. Gives the person a better space, but it also would only count as three hundred square feet of impervious area. You know what I mean? That's just my input.
Oh, I wasn't following you at first. Just to clarify, Jared, what you're saying is, is that you would count. The built footprint of the proposed ADU. As half of its.
Yeah, or, or we can discuss what that rate would be. I, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on what I think would help with infill. But yeah, fifty percent of that proposed structure, correct?
Okay, thanks for clarifying. Comments for or anti that in support or just a friendly challenge? Just a quick check in.
Just before we get into that, we have ten minutes remaining of this discussion before we're in the staff update.
Thank you.
I have kids to put to bed.
My kids are here right next to me, so. I don't, I don't want to hear it, Jared, Jared.
I like Jared's idea on that of it being calculated as less than hundred percent for the footprint. My only thought on that. Is that doesn't necessarily simplify the process for the owners. Um, that that's another layer of them needing to figure out and come to town and say, how's this count on my lot? But it makes a lot of sense.
I do believe in the intelligence of Carbondalians though. To a certain degree there, you know, there, there is an undertaking that they are saying yes to. Yeah, I, and it's, and it, and it's not complex. Algorithmic stuff, it's beyond. Um, but yeah, but point taken, I, you know. That would be an extra diagram that'd be required at some level. Anybody else comments on impervious, Kim?
Well, did we start out talking about the parking? Because I feel like the parking should be exempt.
It already is.
It is, no?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
As far as the building, I think it absolutely should count. Because like the way I understood what you were just saying is the reason this was created was. So that we didn't have wash park in Denver where the, they can build anything from the edge of the lot to the edge of the lot. And there's no land. So I think, I think the ADU should absolutely count toward that.
In, in full, full, one-to-one on the footprint.
Fifty, the fifty percent idea was good.
Okay, so the, an alternative percentage you'd be open to.
Yeah.
To be, to be determined.
Absolutely.
Okay, but, but to some degree, but you, you still want some level of calculation to be applied. Great, okay.
I do, I do think. You know, what are we calling an ADU in our head? You know, is it on top of a garage? Is there a carport? Is there a cantilevered balcony? These are all items that are described within our pervious surfaces. The, the definition that says these all count up towards impervious surfaces. So, you know, I, I'd just like to keep that in mind as we're uh, thinking about what is exempt. What can we give an exemption for, for fifty percent or whatever? You know, is it including the uses that the tenant would be using? A carport, the garage, or, you know, is that part of the primary residence?
I, I think fundamentally though, I mean, a mother-in-law or an ADU over a garage, sorry. That is what it is straightforward. It, it's, it's already going to be, that will have already counted against. So it's, it's, i- it's that example. That would just be a, a solution or an approach that would be. I guess already, you know, the, the math would already count against that. Right?
Yeah, if, if you're attached above structure or above existing structure, then that would be subject to the limitation of. What the ADU limitation size is, right? The three hundred minimum, uh, a thousand maximum. But this is for proposed additional footprint. I think that we're. Yep.
And that's a little bit in the weeds to this, but a good point. I guess point noted, that accessory elements. And their impacts, yes, are already identified. And did you have additional comments on um, this impervious topic?
No, I, I think the comments are really good. I like the idea of giving it a percentage. And, and I. Like the points of tree cover and that type of things being affected, so I, it could be a viable solution, I think.
Thanks. Jesse, what are your thoughts?
Same thing. I, I agree with Kim as far as, yeah, we don't want to end up with too much building and not enough land, so. Um, for that reason, I think the calculations would be appropriate.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm just confused a little bit and I apologize, but you know, if we're talking the mother-in-law suite, you know, garage. ADU above garage is, you know, that whole structure. The exempt part, you know, fifty percent exempt impervious or.
There is just no additional. If you, if you put an ADU on top of a garage.
It would have no additional impact to impervious versus pervious.
It's a way of avoiding the, it's a way of, that, that you would basically slip. Well, it's, it's already, the garage is already counted if, if it was.
That's, and, and that's my point is the ground is already counting, so we're talking a standalone ADU. Where that would count as fifty percent versus I want to also add a garage and then an ADU on top of it. So then that person that decides to do that design element kind of gets uh. Doesn't get the benefit, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, that's, no, this is complicated. I, the, the pervious and pervious discussion is, is, is beyond. I think the scope of tonight's conversation. And you're bringing up very good points, like there are too many what-ifs to solve this problem tonight. But, but I think that we could agree on more broad terms. Like, is there a way to reduce the burden? Are we all in agreement to that? Yes or no? Maybe we are. I think we have consensus on that. Then, okay, let's, let's, let's dive into that, how we can do that. I don't know, I'm just trying to speed things up.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Because you're right, like. Cause you're right, like, there's too many what ifs, that's all.
And I only, I only wanna add one more thing. It's like, you know, always having a garage is nice and people have their stuff, but it's also. The elimination of the required parking as well. So you could wrap it all in one.
That's great, same. Yeah, there's a trend right there for sure.
Do you have something you wanted to add in, Jared? Oh, I've got all sorts of stuff, but I'll let you guys chat. Anything else on this impervious topic before we move into our last bucket of the night? Attached, detached. Who wants to begin this one? Anybody have a feeling for, yeah, Anne?
I'm okay with detached, I think in a lot of places it would actually work better than attached in terms of impact. Visual impact, just mass and impact on neighbors, so I I think attached is fine.
Detached.
Detached is fine. I I don't know that that necessarily needs to be restricted.
Jesse, I'm I'm just going down clockwise as always, guys.
Um, and and just to clarify on that, um, is that for Old Town as well?
I I would say everybody, yeah, I mean, I I think it's. Gives you more leeway um to build what would work best with your existing structure. Rather than be tied into losing windows and losing views or, you know.
Yeah, um, I I agree with that comment. I'm leaning in the direction of detached, um, with the understanding that, um, Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, the town. Would require it to still be tapped into the main water line, main sewer, no separation of utilities.
Okay, yeah, so.
Yeah, that that's not a topic that the town is interested in modifying in these regulations, period.
It it also. Just to add on, it also could be supportive of the site, right? It cases where there is an alley or, um. If we work with a the structure as well as the site, both of those things could be, uh, to could help accommodate. Attached, detached, uh, based on access, just to put it in. Franco, what are your thoughts on this? Summarize.
Yeah, I'm always in the definitions, so I was curious. What's, what's, what's our definition for attached first detached?
Significant portion of the roof foundation.
I forget what the question is, so.
All right.
Uh, I'm I'm all for detached, because I think if we're trying to encourage A D Us and get more housing on lots. You've gotta give them the detached option, because everybody can't just. And a lot of, like, we've had people come in and say they don't, you know, wanna share a wall with. Their mentor or whoever, so I think definitely detached just across the board.
And it just for for clarification for all of you, I just, just for me. When we're saying, when you're all saying detached, that means you're open to that in addition to attached, right? There, we we aren't saying that we are solely gonna say only detached, just, right, is it that? Okay. Okay, Jared, senior.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm obviously a favor for detached, but I think it really depends on lot size. And uh, ability to provide that, that privacy and that separation. And like you said, if there's an alley access. You know, I I think we should be very supportive of of detached. I think that allows. The the current building owner to not have to adjust their way of life. Too much in order to accommodate this A D U. I think if you have alley access with detached, I think that gives you. A a recipe for a peaceful coexistence with whoever is occupying that residence, so very much in support of detached.
Right on. A quick question for the architects in the room. Uh, can either of you comment on the financial i- in order of magnitude? For between a standalone addition and a partially attached or fully attached addition? Is there a a rough understanding of? A large increase once a a structure is pulled off or left on and then the retrofit requirement?
I think detached is gonna always be easier and less expensive than trying to attach to an existing structure. Um, short term, but long term, when you would, when you attach, you have some uh, long term. Savings on heating and cooling. Um, potentially. So it's kind of six one happens, there's probably a, there's, I don't know when you would reach your zero point, but it'd be.
Wait, so the the savings upfront is on which?
Up front would be detached.
Okay, and then long term would be attached.
I kinda, I don't know that you'd ever really, you know, reach a zero point there, you know.
Or are we kind of splitting hairs here, or is there anything?
Yeah, like what are you dropping your heating bills, you know? Depends on how it's attached, but you could drop your heating bills significantly if it's, if you have a party wall. You know?
Can I ask a question? For those two on that line, what about fully within the existing structure?
Like within the existing building.
Say a basement or.
That's the most efficient.
And that's gonna be the least costly, I assume, to to construct, or would like retrofitting that be?
What are you gonna do? Are you gonna like Shawshank Redemption, a basement, A D U underneath an existing house?
I'm just saying, I've got a crawl space and I've got holy pockets, so.
It really depends on the scenario.
Well, well, to this, I mean, there are actually, you know, I don't know how many in Carbon, no, because of the soils we have, but there are half basements out there. Where you could, you know, break a single foundation wall and dig out a a half basement. And then extend it, I mean, there are, I guess, potentials there, that's where you're.
I think the simplest way to look at this is if you are affecting existing foundation. And you're tying into existing foundation, that is going to, you know, up your cost significantly, because you're gonna have to. Tie into that, you are also risking affecting that existing structure as it is tying into it. I think detached is probably your cheapest and most efficient way to go about it, if you want. To provide already within that footprint and not adjust anything. Like, if you have to, if you take your crawl space and dig out underneath, you're affecting that existing foundation, so that's just on the same lines of as attached. But if you are. If you're detaching, you're really not affecting that existing structure at all, and that's, to me, that's where your money is made, and if you wanna worry about. Efficiency of utilities, I think that comes down to what systems you're using. Are you. Supplementing with solar or uh, are you using an efficient boiler, electric versus natural gas? I think those are the things that uh, are going to help. Reduce that delta of, you know, over time, does. Does the attached help you keep your house hotter for longer or cooler for longer, so.
Okay, thank you guys for that. Um, I don't wanna get into it tonight, but I know we are. Um, we are learning a lot every day with a with a newish building, um, uh, chief building official. I don't know, Jared, if it's something, an easy question. For, um, just because this is out of my knowledge, I know perhaps a few of you as well, what additional. Impacts or challenges there would be in building permit side. Um, of an internal A D U, uh, per Aaron's guidance and input on that. Or if there's an order of magnitude of challenge with an attached detached. All right, that was awesome. Thank you all for staying really on target and providing thoughtful comments. Anything closing before I pass it back to Jared for a staff update? Was that helpful to you all of you? Did you all feel that was, you gained some knowledge, you got your comments out?
But have we helped them with what we were supposed to be trying to do tonight?
I saw him writing feverishly over there, so I assumed that some, some thing was happening.
No, i- in all seriousness, I think you guys kind of worked through a few um, topics. I think there's still a few more topics, and so I think we have kind of. Two routes to go. If you guys want, we could continue this for two weeks and come back at the next meeting and just. Continue discussing the topics that are outlined and maybe hit that next segment that Jared was. Was initially going at, um, and then maybe do a longer continuation after we receive some more feedback. To draft some some code language, or we could still. Make the continuation as outlined. In the staff recommendation.
For one month.
For for September twenty fifth, so essentially, September, I think it's eleventh is the date. Or September twenty fifth. Um, and and it's really just a. Do you guys wanna continue talking about this initial, or do you wanna get some more information on these topics?
More information on the permeable, permeable, impermeable specifically. It's just a matter of looking at the tables, so it's just lazy.
You feel like you, I guess, I guess your objective was on the twenty fifth, was it? Come back or?
Yeah, I just think if we got some very clear direction, if we had a month, we'd have time to come back with some. So maybe draft code language that affected or that 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 addressed some of the initial. Topics discussed. It was never my thought that we would get through all the topics tonight, so. Um, I think it's really just a, do you want to continue talking about some of the overarching? Direction policy and then come back with maybe a more comprehensive set of. Draft code changes or discussions, or do you wanna kind of? Say, what do we think about these and then circle back around and discuss some of the other topics down the road?
So, so we're looking at continuing public hearing to either the eleventh or the twenty fifth, correct?
No, twenty fifth.
Correct, eleventh, we won't have any additional information other than what you see in tonight's packet. Twenty fifth, we could have some additional information.
Help me here, maybe I'm missing something, um. Who, do we currently have anything on the docket for the docket for the eleventh? Um, other than other, anything standing?
No, I think the only thing that we were gonna potentially discuss is um, the the parking. Item, but that's really a, i- is that. Randy, I think, I think there's, in my opinion, there's more value in kind of.
Banging this out.
Yes, pushing this topic forward than kind of bifurcating thoughts and energy and. Going in a different, but also related direction.
Happy to continue discussing this on the eleventh, but I I I do agree, I think if we keep this up to the twenty fifth, we're gonna have a lot more. Sustenance to actually discuss, so if we can continue tonight's agenda. For the eleventh and then come back on the twenty fifth with. Zone text amendments for what we talked about tonight, is is that what I'm I'm hearing is the most efficient in town and staff's desire? Or are we trying to wait this month? Cause I know. I know we're a little bit busy on your guys' front here.
I would say if you guys continued discussing this on the eleventh, there's a chance that we could have some, some. Items for the twenty fifth, there's a greater chance that we would have items for um, October ninth. So, you know, I I think there's probably a month. Delay coming up. It's just whether it's now and then we continue discussing more, or you give us more feedback and then we come back with maybe. More responses to the various topics.
Got it, okay. I mean, then in that case, I'm good with sticking with the twenty fifth. And allowing us to get some zone text. Language brought before us and a little bit more additional information as requested.
If we do that, what are we doing on the eleventh?
Um, either parking or not having a meeting.
I see. Trying to to to, um, any other opinions on this? Um, I agree with you, Jared, that bifurcating and including both can be somewhat. Maybe challenging, at the same time. We have to complete both of these and I don't wanna let one drop until the last minute, because unlike A D Us with parking. We have to. Get edumicated, get an R F P together, advertise and select somebody by the end of this year. So it's, although the, I think there's a challenge to A D Us that is more complex, there's a logistical. Outlay for us on the parking. Task as well, that that just takes time, um, so. And we've had a very lax summer, I I might put out there as far as a commission, so. As much as I love days off of all things. It seems like we we can't really afford it at this point, I would, I'd recommend that we we meet on the eleventh. Um, and I am open to going either direction, I guess, is what I would say. If we, if we keep rolling with this, I think it's perhaps somewhat fresh and kind of a two week way, uh, in everybody's minds. Um, or we can get parking going and kind of get a D N A. Double helix process in in, you know, in place. Is there anybody who cannot meet on the eleventh or who could not be here? Nick, you're not available? That is news.
That is news.
We'll, we'll get to that one, okay? Um, is anybody else unable to make the eleven?
I will, I will not be there on the eleventh, I'm out of the country.
Okay, thanks uh, for letting us know, Cindy. Um, of of the folks that will be here. Um, a a show of hands for those people would like to maintain the A D U conversation and kind of keep on target. Got one for Jared? Okay, so I I see Kim and and Jesse also and and Franco. So then we will um, hold off on parking, we'll be, we'll be back here on the eleventh to continue this conversation. And just for my understanding, is it same format, so will we have public comment, will it be a similar?
Yes, um, it will be the same format, obviously the staff presentation will be. Nothing, most likely, um, and so it will just be, uh, if there's members of the public, I think. An opportunity to give them the speak and then kind of diving into the rest of these questions and kind of moving forward.
A request of staff, if I may. If there's a way to. If you would like us to have some sort of organized approach. To continue this, to provide more help and guidance for you. If you would like to give us a roadmap to that. Um, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, we can update the memo to um, reformat some of those questions to continue this conversation based on. Jared's thoughts, so.
Yep, awesome. Um, okay. Zach, something for everybody? We got, we're good on that?
We will need a formal motion. And the motion um, on page eight of the staff memo is great, with the exception of September eleventh instead of September twenty fifth.
Motion, motion to approve the onsite, no, sorry, that was the wrong one, page eight.
Jesse's got it.
Jesse's got it.
Thank you, Jesse.
Make a motion to move to continue the public hearing for an amendment. Amendment to the Unified Development Code for the purpose of reviewing regulations related to accessory dwelling units to September. Eleventh. Twenty twenty five.
Perfect, second. To Anne or Kim, sorry. Great, uh, staff update.
All, all in favor?
Oh, yeah, I always gloss over democracy, uh, all in favor. Got it, the eyes have it across the board. Thanks, Jared. Moving too fast. Staff update?
We've got a new town manager, we've got a new finance director.
I'm I'm at, is there, um. Was there any plans for the new town manager to, uh, to meet this commission or are, it does he plan to meet the commissions at all, or is there?
Yes, he um, is planning on meeting the commissions, um. He was actually online earlier, I don't know if he is still online, Ryan is.
Oh, there is, okay.
Align, you can make him a panelist if he has anything to say, um, but yeah, I do think. Ryan is planning on getting around and meeting all. Ryan is planning on getting around and meeting all the commissions, it's just a matter of getting his feet underneath him and getting that going.
Awesome.
Um, and then we have a new finance director, um Ola Verpluth, um, used to work with Revel Bikes, he's been in the community for fifteen plus years, so um he lives here in Carbondale and he is on day four. Um, and so he's got our budget pretty much wrapped up, it'll be submitted to the trustees Monday and um he's got it all figured out.
That's a way to start, out of the gates.
I'm pretty, I I'm, you know, I wasn't there, but that's pretty much what I've gathered.
One of those black man jobs.
Yep.
Um, but no, we're we're excited to have them both here, um, and 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 yeah, I think that's really it from a uh staff update, OTR Design Guidelines, the um Historic Preservation Commission is moving forward with those. Um, you'll probably see some open houses at some upcoming public events, like a First Friday and Potato Days to help get awareness and hopefully we'll have some draft recommendations on that coming forward. Once we have something to comment, we'll bring it to this group and get any feedback from this group to send back to that group.
Who was selected for that? What firm?
Reed Architects, they wrote the original design guidelines, um, and have a great familiarity with yes, they they've been quite involved in Carbondale's um historic history.
Great.
Historic preservation history, history of historic preservations. There we go. Um, what else? Let me say anything? That's it, you guys have anything for us?
I only wanted to particular the parking, I did send you an email, so I don't I don't know the okayness of that or not.
Yeah, that's fine.
For the value of that.
I've just been trying to dig out of weeds for my vacation, so I haven't had a chance to circle wagons, but yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, so just as a quick heads up, and then we're gonna be pushing this off now, so it's, um, but I did reach out to um a past project partner, um, who works uh for a a small parking group out of Denver that specifically works with medium to small-sized towns and many, many mountain towns. Um, uh, the opportunity, I had to work with uh this person in in individual. Um, it was just amazing, her knowledge and her finger was on the pulse of parking, um, uh really across Colorado, but nationally, everything from from Santa Barbara to Boulder to Estes Park to, you know, uh, to large to Denver. Um, are are their clients, and so I actually, I asked her if she would be open to a virtual uh, meeting with us, and she was more than happy to to meet with us, ask any question, answer any questions and kind of give us a little bit of some some guidance or perspective on the process, um, if you all are interested, so um, if not, if you all feel good about the process and, you know, then no worries, but it is available if if you think that'd be helpful for our discussions when we are past this adventure.
I find value in it.
Two yeses.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay, great, I will let Vanessa know then and um uh, we'll get her uh scheduled up for a for a virtual kind of uh check-in once we're past the ADU conversations. Thank you. Adjourned.
By the way, I can walk, everybody. I was cleared to start walking yesterday.
Nice, so you moved just a boot?
I, yeah, I, the boot is hard to walk in, so I still gotta walk with crutches, but I get my my super boot sometime next week, so very excited.
You did make us feel like we were all um lesser people when you showed up to the uh mock-up review and rolled out of your car and got your wheelie and wheeled over, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Impressive.
It's pretty trick, so I'm glad you appreciated it.
Oh, wait.
Nick has an announcement, I think, too.
Yeah, sorry, I almost gloss glossed over.
So this is my last meeting, um, thank you, everybody. Um, you guys are in very.